Affirmation portion of the agenda?
All right, I'll start with the May financial update from Ms. Cody.
Okay, so in May, we had two budget amendments, both were increases, one for the, to record the teacher externship and then one to record an interest adjustment. And then our, our revenues were at 94.3% of budget and our expenditures were at 89.1%. The budget position was 92% as of May. Our April sales type collections were received in May in the amount of $3,102,640. And the tax collections received in May of this year were 3.5% higher than May of last year. I just wanted to give a reminder that our last collection was in June and we will receive that at the end of this month.
Are there any questions?
I do have one. Do we anticipate that we'll come close to the full revenue budget?
I think we will. I actually compared it with last year's and last year we were at 95.3% and we actually ended up at 101.4%. So I think we definitely will.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and then moving to the investment analysis. So not really a whole lot to report. Our May interest was $738,674.
Any questions for Ms. Cody?
Ms. Haywood with vape detectors.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we would ask that the board consider approving purchase of vape detectors for Brunswick High and Glenn Academy in the cost of $174,513.77. These were solicited through our TIPS purchasing contract from ProLogic. We were able to conduct a pilot in April. Brunswick High graciously volunteered to pilot because we did not want to spend this kind of money without making sure that the device has actually worked. And so we ran a pilot from April 18th through May 23rd and within the first week of installing, we had many alerts, so we know that they work well. They're not just for vaping. They can detect a myriad of different things to include smoke, they can delineate between THC, nicotine, they also can detect sound. So they can do a myriad of different things with regard to safety. So we're asking the board to please consider this. We would be utilizing the state safety grant funds to purchase these and we would be installing them at both Brunswick High and Glenn Academy. Certainly, any questions that you have, we'll be happy to answer those.
So when I looked at the quote, and I haven't pulled it up yet, it looks like that we've got the hardware cost, but then we also have a cost that relates to licensing, but that's a multi-year cost.
Yes, ma'am.
So this will be what it is for three years?
The cost for the units is separate, yes, ma'am. So we'll pay for that and then the three years for the licensing and then there's another small fee, but yes, we would have utilized this grant to take care of that.
For the three years?
Yes, ma'am.
There's actually an additional year. We get one year with the unit purchased, the license is an additional three years.
Okay, so it's over four years.
So we would actually be for four.
Right.
Okay, that's even better.
It looks like 128, so that's every bathroom in both high schools?
Yes, sir. Every restroom.
Restroom.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
The baths and the rooms, we have.
Any other questions for Ms. Haywood? Moving on, we'll go with the facilities update with Mr. Blackerby.
All right, I'll run through our East Flash projects, which St. Simon's is still one of our big projects going on and we are trying to get things wrapped up for the start of the school year. As you approved, I guess, two weeks ago, a change for the trusses that were needed, one of the big changes was for the trusses and cafeteria. Those are on site now, making preparations to start installing. Those are scaffolding and everything's in place, ready to install them. Obviously, the weather is not ideal to start ripping the roof off of a building, but by the end of the week, we should be thoroughly into that process in hopes that we can complete the cafeteria in time for school to start. The kitchen is fully operational because we use it at the end of the year. If we, there is a chance that we may not have the cafeteria, the finishes completely complete for the first day of school here, so again, we can use the cafeteria, we just may have to serve lunches in alternate locations in the building, whether it's classrooms or on the stage or in the gym lobby or some of the commons areas. But we're hopeful that we'll have that scheduled worked out by the end of the week. Again, depending, weather permitting, we'll be able to get that accomplished. Etzatilla Marsh, I think we have the entire building is under renovation as well as the new kitchen is still under works. We do have the finishes, the flooring and everything complete into three wings, the classroom wings. We've already started moving the teacher materials back into, we already have it in two wings and are working on the third wing now. After we get all of the stuff we moved out back into the classrooms, then we'll put the flooring down in the hallway and the wings will be complete at that time. Everything, everything will be ready to go to the classrooms and we'll start concentrating on the media center, the offices in the gym, which are not far behind. We've already started putting the ceiling grid and all the mechanical is complete in those areas, is now just following along behind with the flooring. And the kitchen equipment there is scheduled to arrive, I believe, at the end of next week and we'll get that installed and the kitchen will be operational for the first day of school. The portable classrooms, they have been removed, which will allow us to finish up the site work, so we're making preparations to lay the final asphalt here in the coming weeks, again, weather permitting on that as well. Brunswick High driveway, and the change that was approved last, or two weeks ago for the additional piping and site work that was needed there, that process has begun and curbs are installed on both sides of the driveway at this point. And as of today, the stormwater piping is being, the new stormwater piping is being installed. So we're hopeful as soon as we can, in coordination, it's the same contractor that's doing the paving for St. Simon's, Etzatilla Marsh and Brunswick High, that they're going to stage those in the coming weeks to pave all those back to back. And then the Goodyear Gym, which is a smaller project, we, the roof is complete, metal wall panels are complete. In the process of getting the insulation they put in the ceiling and are now working on painting the ceiling before we put the floor down. And also change the lights after we paint the ceiling. But all those projects are moving along well, but St. Simon's and Etzatilla Marsh, they will be down to the wire, but we feel confident we'll be, we'll be ready for the first day of school. Any questions on the projects? As far as the Goodyear report goes, the board already covered the projects, but on page 14, I don't see the attachment in there. I don't know if you have it in front of you. Down to the comparison of the collections, which Ms. Cody already covered in the May financial report. But we do have our last, our June collection, which was the end of the quarter, which is just slightly above where it was last June at $3,187, which last year was $3,147. It looks like our, at the end, we will have collected $115 million, a little over $115 million, so about $3 million over our target of 112 million.
Any other questions for Mr. Blackerby? Thank you. And then finally, I have a video surveillance policy from Ms. Haywood.
Sir, asking the board to consider a new policy to govern the surveillance cameras and security of those cameras. Mr. Madala, I believe, has also discussed that for you all to consider allowing that to lay on the table for 30 days and for you to consider it for approval. If you have any questions about that.
Any questions from Ms. Haywood? I believe that's all I have.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all for the presentations. I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session for security and personnel.
I thought they had land.
Okay, security, personnel and land. You still good with that, Ms. Gibbons?
Yes.
Okay, so Ms. Gibbons makes the motion. Go here a second.
I'll say.
Second, Mr. Edgy. All those in favor? It's unanimous at 512.
Welcome to our board meeting for July 9, 2024. We will start with our invocation and pledge by Mr. Eggy.
By please rest.
Dear heavenly Father, thank you for another great day in the Golden Isles. Thank you for our teachers, administrators, and staff. We ask you to be with this board as we make decisions that affect all students of our community. I'd also like to send a prayer out and be with the Benita Tanneran family with the passing of her mother, as well as the Jerry Brown family and our family of Ritzley Middle for his passing. We ask all these things in your precious name. Amen.
Congratulations.
United States of America.
That's second.
That's right.
I guess.
Mr. Edgy to entertain the motion to adjourn and Mr. Halsey second. All right, all those in favor of adjourn? There is unanimous. Good evening, welcome to our board meeting for July 9, 2024. We will start with our invocation and pledge by Mr. Edgy.
If I please rise.
Dear heavenly Father, thank you for another great day in the Golden Isles. Thank you for our teachers, administrators, and staff. We ask you to be with this board as we make decisions that affect all students of our community. I'd also like to send a prayer out and be with the Benita Tanneran family with the passing of her mother, as well as the Jerry Brown family and our family of Rizley Middle for his passing. We ask all these things in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation and one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Edgy. Next on our agenda is citizens address the board. So we have Aubrey Reedy that has signed up, but before we begin, I just have to read this preamble. The Board of Education has adopted a policy that permits citizens under certain circumstances to address the board on a variety of topics of general concern to the operation of our schools. We welcome visitors to the board meetings and are interested in hearing from the taxpayers and patrons of the school system. However, board members will not respond during the meeting to comments or questions from speakers or make immediate decisions. Board member contact information can be found on the Glen County Schools website. We have also established a few simple rules for public comment. Each person wishing to address the board must sign a roster before the meeting begins. Each person is limited to five minutes and the public comment portion of the meeting will not exceed 30 minutes. Any citizen who has a specific complaint involving an employee must first address the issue with the superintendent, and if not resolved, then may request to speak with the board. However, certain matters involving personnel and students must be heard in close session. The superintendent will inform you whether your complaint is one and which should be referred to an executive session with the board. By signing this roster, you agree to abide by the rules. All right, Ms. Reedy, thank you.
I timed it, so it was less than five minutes. My name is Aubrey Reedy. I'm an art therapist and licensed professional counselor, but most importantly, my identity is mom. My oldest daughter graduated from a local high school, and thanks to their rigorous AP classes, she received an academic scholarship to attend Pepperdine University in California. My youngest daughter is entering her junior year at the high school. Our family has been blessed to live in Glen County for the past 10 years. In May, I reached out to our high school attempting to enroll two foreign exchange students. I was a little shocked and confused when students were denied enrollment. I went through the appropriate process of meeting personally with the proper chain of command where it was communicated that both high schools in our district will no longer be accepting foreign exchange students. That is why I'm here today. There is transformative value in allowing exchange students into high schools. These immersive experiences last an entire school year, allow for profound connections to be established across cultures and many miles. Exposing high school students to diverse perspectives is important because it prepares them for our increasingly globalized world. No book or brief visit overseas can replicate this type of learning experience. Years ago, when I was in high school, my parents hosted five different foreign exchange students, and because this experience was so positive and life-changing, it has been my heart's desire to give my own children at least one experience hosting. It never crossed my mind that our high school would say no. This decision to host was not a spur-of-the-moment decision. My research and preparation began almost a full year ago. It took me three months to discern the top six agencies. I wanted a reputable program that would assume all liability and provide the most support. By December, I had narrowed down my selection from six to two agencies. We'll call them Agency A and Agency B. Both these agencies adhered to the 13 specific criteria that are outlined in our school board policy manual. In January, I began the extensive application process. Both required background checks, five reference phone calls from people who know me in the community, pictures of all the rooms in our homes, interviews and questions about family dynamics, and a video tour of our home and neighborhood. This level of diligence is critical as hosting foreign exchange students comes with inherent responsibilities. The host family must be prepared to manage. By March, I was finally given access to student profiles. I spent hours reading through prospective student letters, parent letters, trying to find the most compatible students to mesh with our family dynamics. By doing this due diligence upfront, I positioned myself to provide the safest, most enriching experience possible for the international youth who would be entrusted into my care. As I stated previously, it was in May when I initially reached out to the school and was denied enrollment. At the time, I was feeling pressured by Agency A to make a decision while Agency B was being patient and allowing me to wait for the right student. Agency B also provided me with, I know it's hard to see, but it's a 52-page handbook to show how they provide advanced communication and problem-solving ahead of time. This handbook is full of tools, worksheets for healthy communication about chores, screen time, dating, sex, alcohol, drugs, school attendance, a mandatory high-grade point average. Students know that if there is any violation of these policies, they will immediately be sent home. When Agency B was willing to support me through the appeal process, I knew they were the best choice for a successful experience. In conclusion, this decision to suddenly deny foreign exchange students despite having an established policy that explicitly welcomes such students is a puzzling and concerning development. I am urgently appealing to the school board to honor its own established policies and allow these cultural exchange opportunities to continue. I have emailed short videos of the two students who are awaiting your approval to come to America. I ask that before a decision is made, the board would view the videos as a form of respect to the hours of preparation that have gone into this process by many. Additionally, the president of the agency is willing to personally answer any questions and provide any legal documents needed. Finally, I ask that you take into account my adherence to the board policy of appealing through the proper channels. I was denied enrollment in May, which was before the June 1 deadline. Obviously, we are now past that deadline. These students are prepared to begin school in August, and we would love to give them a full year that includes football games and other American traditions as opposed to them coming later in January.
Another minute to wrap it up?
It's done.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes, so as opposed to coming later in January, we would like you to take that into consideration. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for expressing your concern.
And would the board like a copy of this?
If you'd like to leave it. That was our only speaker, so the next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Your motion to approve the agenda as presented tonight?
Sub move.
Motion by Ms. Gibbons?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Edgy. All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented? It is unanimous. As far as the consent agenda items go, working through those, we'll include on the consent agenda item number six, approval of the June 11, 2024 work session meeting minutes. Item seven, approval of the June 11, 2024 regular board meeting minutes. Item eight, approval of the June 25, 2024 special call board meeting budget hearing. Item nine A, personnel. Item nine B, field trips. Item nine C1, the GUT report. Item nine D1, approval of the May 2024 financial report. Item nine D2, approval of the vape detector purchase that was discussed in our work session earlier. Item nine E1, policy GARHB, paid parental leave. Item nine E2, GBRIG, policy on Federal and Family Medical Leave Act. Item nine E3, policy IFBGC, employee computer and internet use. And item nine E4, policy JCDA, student code of conduct. These policies were placed on the table for 30 days and are now up for approval. Does anyone have any deletions or questions?
This is something simple, but can we take eight off and vote on it separately? I think that's the meeting I missed.
Okay, sure.
I can't vote affirmatively for a meeting I didn't attend, so let's take it off. I don't want to not vote for everything else.
Thank you, I agree. Okay, so we'll remove item eight, approval of June 25, 2024 special call board meeting budget hearing minutes from the consent agenda, and we'll vote on that separately afterwards.
Thank you.
Any other changes? Okay, that being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
To move.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Halsey to approve the consent agenda and a second by Ms. Gibbons. All those in favor of approving tonight's consent agenda? It's unanimous. Okay, so we'll go back to item number eight, approval of the June 25, 2024 special call board meeting budget hearing minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
To move.
Motion by Dr. Jürgen to approve the June 25 minutes and a second by Ms. Gibbons. All those in favor of approving those minutes? Okay, abstention. Okay, so we have six voting to approve and one abstention because he was not at the meeting. Right, that's everything we have for tonight, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
To move.
Those two at one. Okay, give it to Dr. Jürgen.
I'll second.
Motion to adjourn, and Mr. Edgy will second that motion. All those in favor? It is unanimous at 6:17. Thank y'all.